Rob, how many folks you got?
We got four and the nominee.
Four and the nominee.
I got five.
Yeah, five, okay.
Four here if I can help.
No, John, you stay there. So, three come sit over here, and then Rob his chair, you and the nominee sit over here.
I can move if you want.
Nope, you're fine. Just enough to handle this.
What do you need, six? Need one more, Olivia?
No, it's just five.
Five?
It is five.
Yep, they got five. We got just enough seats.
Let that move, clear it off fast.
What's that?
That room cleared off fast.
Come on, raise the means.
Put it a little faster.
You consider it makes sense.
All right, so we're gonna take 672 now. Library trustee appointment. Rob, what do you have for us?
Well, we met last Thursday in our usual meeting, and we decided on our candidate, Jesse Angeli, and we're ready to put him forward. And we sent you the bios, and he's a lawyer, and he can talk for himself, so he can introduce himself.
Hi there, thank you, Rob. My name's Jesse Angeli. My wife and I and our three young kids live here in town. Moved just before COVID hit, so end of 2019. We are big lovers of the library, and I saw that there was a vacancy, and I've been wanting to get involved in some way in the town, and I thought that would be a good opportunity. I grew up in a town with a very strong library, served as sort of the hub of our community, and, you know, given my kids' active involvement in the library, I thought it would be a good way for me to get involved. My day job is an attorney in a firm in Woburn. I do business law, so a lot of merchants and acquisitions work, negotiations, contract drafting, so forth. Before that, I've had an assortment of non-legal jobs: airline industries, farm, hand, you name it, so colorful background.
All right, excellent. Do you want any questions, Mr. Angeli?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah?
Actually, why'd you choose Burlington to, as a community, to raise your family in?
So, we were, we had one child at the time. We were living in a small apartment in Waltham with our oldest daughter. We were expecting our second, so we were looking around, and I've spent some time in Burlington, just my office is here, so on a professional basis, and a few times I've taken sort of the backroads through Burlington and said, wow, this is more than just a little strip down the mall, in the mall area there. And, you know, my wife and I came and visited and tried to do restaurants, and we knew some realtors in town who sort of gave us, who've lived here their whole lives, gave us a background, and we were fortunate to see a house we liked, and we were the lucky winner when it was a very tough market. And we were fortunate because it was just before COVID hit, so we now have three kids, and I couldn't imagine being in a small apartment with three kids.
Gotcha.
But, yeah, we've been here, it's very convenient to my work, it's a great community. Yeah, we enjoy it.
Terrific, okay, thank you.
Good, awesome. Well, there's no further questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve library trustee appointment.
Okay.
I don't think it was the library, yes, sorry.
Motion been made and seconded, all right. This is a joint vote.
So we like to vote.
So, we don't have to do a roll call for this, right?
You might as well, for the record.
For the record?
Yeah.
All right. Mike, we'll start with you, Mr. Spago.
Yes.
Mr. Moretti.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Sigus.
Yes.
Mr. Sheen.
Yes.
Sorry, I don't remember your last name.
Gully.
Ms. Gully?
Yes.
Yes, that's the one.
Excellent.
And yes.
And the chair votes aye. That is unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, make sure not skipping anything. 674 Public Hearing Task Classification. We're gonna open the public hearing. Just need a motion to approve the notice as it was advertised.
So move.
Second. Okay, motion been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, 5-0-0 for the notice, and now we've got task classification. All come on down. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
If you don't mind, I'll just start it off.
You want to take it off?
And then maybe John might have a few words.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's that time of year when the board is asked to set the distribution of the tax levy in the community. A lot of work's gone into it up at this point. We will basically be funding the fiscal year 2023 budget, which started on July 1st. And again, I think, yes, us have some good numbers to report to the board, and we just want to be able to provide any information we can at this time. And I just want to thank the finance team, John, Gary, Paul, Jolene, Whitney, and everybody for their contributions to this, as well as, I just want to recognize, we have a couple of our elected Board of Assessors in the background, both named Sheen, as well as Commercial Property Tax Appraiser Jim Doherty. So, with that, I'll see if John has anything further to add, and then we can get into it.
Nothing further other than to just reiterate, this is the last step in a long process that started a year ago, and the finance team did a great job, and thankfully we have two of them in his hands tonight.
All right.
Good evening, everybody, thank you for having us. I'd also like to mention that Kathy O'Neill could not be here today from the Board of Assessors, and I'd like to acknowledge my two coworkers, Deb Smoski and Maria Lombardo, for all their efforts throughout the year. So, to get started, we're here because town meeting sets the budget for the year. This year, our budget is $134,491,000, so that's the town meeting part of it. The assessors' role in this is to set the values. This year, overall property values in town are at $8.5 billion. That includes real estate, commercial, industrial, personal property. Personal property makes up most of utility companies and decibel companies. That's an increase from last year at $7.9 billion. So, the role tonight from the select board is to allocate those dollars to set the tax rate. But we are actually, when we do, at the end of the meeting, we do set, I want to remind you that we're setting the class factor for the CIP rate. So, we have six options in our booklet here tonight, and review them all. So, last year, the average value, single-family value for a home in Burlington was $600,500. This year, for FY '23, it has increased to $659,200. So, the real estate market is pretty robust in town. Also, excuse me a second. Compared to our, most of the towns, neighboring towns, Burlington has a very competitive tax rate for the residential, we're basically second lowest, right behind Woburn, and we're very competitive in the commercial tax rate throughout all these towns, some of which are Woburn, Bedford, and Belrika. Other than that, just open it up to questions now, if anyone has any.
Sure. Gentlemen, questions? Joe, anything?
No.
Mr. Spago?
No questions, Jim.
Mr. Ryan?
I really haven't, other than, you know, this is, it's a year-round job getting to this point, although nobody enjoys the tax increases, it's a fact of life. But thank you very much for your time and effort. I think it's a very reasonable rate for the town of Burlington. I think we've been fortunate over the past few decades here in Burlington to, you know, be able to share that burden with our robust commercial sector and continue that status as king of the hill, if you will, in regards to the commercial sector, and I think we've taken steps to do that with, you know, our Economic Development Office acquisition recently as well. So, I'm pleased with the numbers you presented tonight.
Mr. Chairman, just a few observations or comments. As you stated, Paul, the town meeting sets the budget. We don't set the budget, town meeting sets the budget.
Right.
What we look at is, the one variable we can look at, or you can help us with, is the rate. And most of the options, it's a reduction in the rate, which is something we can control to a point, but when your real estate values go up 9.1%, that's something that's out of our control. So, people say, how do the, why do the taxes keep going up? Well, it's because it's the value of the house is one of the factors, is why the taxes are going up. I mean, this year, like you said, the average price went up 9.1%. And, you know, we really can't control that aspect of it. I just wanted to make that comment.
Absolutely. And thank you for clarifying that, Jim, because I think that's important, that folks understand, you know, what it is we're doing here tonight, and, you know, where all these numbers are kind of coming from. I first want to thank Paul, Gary, the both of you, for everything you and your staff do. Mr. Sheen, Mr. Sheen, thank you both for being here. I, I think, you know, so folks who are either tuning in or might watch us later, what we have before us are several different options in terms of how we can approach, like Jim said, what that factor's gonna be as we look forward. I think, you know, it's important to recognize as residents that as our property value increases, so too do our taxes. That's just a byproduct of the town doing well and being desirable. It's now our job to decide by how much. The variance is quite literally dollars. We're not trying to take the $200 option and then a $1,000 option and then a five, you know, we're talking about a very, very narrow spread here, you know, and we have to ensure, and that's why, you know, Paul and Gary and the Board of Assessors do this, have to ensure that what we're aiming toward is satisfying what came out of town meeting in May, and that's how we get here, right? So, with that, is there anything else that anyone wants to add? I'm just gonna kind of open it up for a hot second before I turn it to the public, because this is a public hearing. Okay? Is there anybody in the public who would like to make comment on this? If you're online, you gotta raise your hand. If you're in the room, it'd help you raise your hand, too, I'm just... Okay. Seeing nobody, I'll accept a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second. Okay, motion been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, 5-0-0 to close the public hearing. Okay. Gentlemen, anything else, any other further discussion, questions, comments, concerns around where you all feel these different options that it out? Or if not, I will entertain a motion.
Just a comment.
Yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yeah. In hearing some of the things you guys said, and as select board members, we hear a lot of doom and gloom, I think, all the time with our phone calls and emails and people reaching out, and when you see something like this, and, and thank you, gentlemen, for all your hard work, when you see something like this, and I especially got a good taste of it when I went to the select board, newly-elected select board member training for the Mass Municipal Association, and when other towns, people who are sitting, other select board members from other towns were sitting at my table and heard the difference in our class factor, when, Burlington's very fortunate to have such a strong, diverse business community that pays, carries the freight for like 67% of our levy. When I told, you know, I, being unaware and newly-elected, I didn't know how great that was until you start talking to people from other towns, you start realizing, you see our residential tax rate is so low. So, even though we hear a lot of doom and gloom in select board members, there is a lot of good going on, and we are doing a great job, and something like this reminds you to keep your eye on the, you know, the forest, not just the trees. So, just thank you guys for all your good work, it just made me think of that when I heard you guys all talking, I wanted to add that, so that's all I had, Mr. Sheen.
All right. Anybody else? Okay, if nothing else, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. I, all the options are very similar, but the one that has the least impact on the residents, option C, I'd like to make a motion, we approve option C.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion and a second on option C. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain. That's 5-0-0 for option C.
Just so we can toggle back, so if you could make a motion to adopt the class factor of 1.668549, to make it official?
Paul.
Because that's what we're adopting, so I'll just...
Paul, three seconds ago. What a big guy.
I'll make a motion to adopt the class factor of 1.668549.
Okay, that motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, 5-0-0.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just for the record, the current residential rate is 9.95. This would bring the rate down to 9.4 for residents. Just wanted to...
Thank you, Jim.
...put the number up there.
Okay. All right. Any other additional motions we're gonna make on this? Are we prepared? All right.
I got time, Mr. Chairman. The tax bills will be going out probably in about two weeks.
All right, Gary, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ray of sunshine.
Good news, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody, thank you for coming in.
Thanks.
All right. We got 675 Landlocked Forest request. Ms. Simon, do you want to come up? Mr. Keely, I see you in the back there, you joining her?
Yeah.
Come on down. How we doing tonight?
Good. Good evening, it's nice to see you, some of you for the second time today, that was a treat, going on a tour of Pine Glen today. I'm here tonight as a representative of the Friends of the Landlocked Forest. We've been trying to help make sure that the forest is a resource that everybody in Burlington can use, it's free, and the volunteers from the Friends of the Landlocked Forest and from the New England Mountain Biking Association's greater Boston area have done, you know, volunteer work over the, all the years to create maps, to maintain the trails, all of that. And one of the things that we are, as you know, we recently had a new map approved, we haven't yet gotten it, because it's gonna take some time to get all that done. But we also have one smallish meadow in the landlocked forest, and as you may or may not know, meadows that don't get mowed turn into forest, which is a wonderful thing that nature does, but in order to preserve this meadow, we need to mow it. And the Friends of the Landlocked Forest and the Mountain Biking Association have, over the years, done a few mowings, and at the beginning, it was really quite difficult, and we didn't know where the rocks were, and we were doing everything by hand with the loppers and the rakes and everything. And last year, we were actually able to use a brush cutter to mow, actually mow, the meadow, and it was much easier. We still have to rake and lop the vines growing into the trees and those kinds of things, and what we're trying to reduce is the invasive species that tend to grow and take over meadow, in particular, bittersweet is the biggest problem, I think, in the landlocked forest. So, we had hoped to get on the last meeting, but you were busy, so we have scheduled and hope to mow the meadow next Sunday, November 20th, and we do have some volunteers lined up already. So, we're here tonight to ask permission to mow the meadow this year. We worked out the timing and such with John, John's been a great support all these years for us. It's a Sunday, so I know there's been a concern for the deer hunting season, but Sunday is a day when there's no hunting, so it shouldn't interfere with anybody. So, if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Awesome. Mr. Keely, anything to add?
No, I don't think so. Well, so last year, I think in consultation with Mr. Moretti, who I think is the subcommittee for the Landlocked Forest, we decided to push it off as late as possible in the season just to, you know, to sort of enhance the wildlife value of the stuff that they're cutting until, you know, until it was as late as possible, but certainly before it starts to snow. So, I think, you know, mid to late November's a good time to do it.
Last, sorry. Go ahead, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last year, we pushed it off till spring. We did it in the spring. The last two years, it's been done in the spring, and that's why I requested, because of all the animals that will eat that stuff during the winter months, the deer, the rabbits, the squirrels, and we've always done it in the spring. That's what I was told by you five years ago. So, that's what I've been going with, plus with the biologist I know that does the landlocked forest up there, I've talked to him about it. My suggestion is the spring. That's gonna be my vote, is for the spring. That was eight years ago when we started this program for the hunting, and it's got nothing to do with the hunting.
Right.
Nothing to do with the hunting, because we don't hunt on Sundays.
Right.
So, that's got nothing to do with it, it's just that it's better, if I'm wrong, if the biologist is wrong, please tell me, but if I've always been told that it's better to cut it down in the spring, because of all the animals that will eat everything in that meadow, all the little sealets, all the birds, all the squirrels, whatever, that's what I've always been told. You're the conservation guy? I'm not.
Right. So, you know, it's either late fall or spring, like the Mary Cummings is, the trustees are doing it in the fall. It's, for one thing, it's easier to do in the fall, it's not as wet, you don't know how much of a snowpack you're gonna have in the spring, and how long you're gonna have to wait to actually get in there in the spring. In the fall, you get the same, I mean, it could snow next week before they get to it, so there's a danger either way, but there's pluses and minuses. I mean, it's certainly your call. I thought we were, I thought they had done it in the fall the last couple of years, though.
We actually, I don't think, did it last year, because we didn't have the volunteers, and two years ago, we did it in the fall, and it was either, we were, you know, requested, we were gonna, looking to do it a little earlier, John reminded us to do it a little later. It is a small meadow, it doesn't affect 250 acres, it affects about two acres, I think, of the...
But it affects a lot of wildlife.
Yeah, in that area. Mm-hmm.
And that whole 250 acres.
Okay, the vines that are growing there are mostly bittersweet, and which is, I understand, not particularly valuable. John has told me in the past, that's not a real valuable food source for the animals, and we'd like to just be able to do it when we can get people to do it, because we're doing this as volunteers, the town is not paid for any of this. We also, in the spring, in order to get into the forest, we actually have cooperative neighbors who allow us to move equipment through their yards, and in the spring, it's very, if there's no snow, it's really hard to get a mower in because of the wet ground. So, we'd really like to do it next Sunday.
Martha, if you do it the fall, do you have to do it in the spring?
Well, there are people I've spoken to over the years who think that the meadow should be mowed two or three times a year. I, and I've talked to John, who feels like once a year is fine, which is probably all we can muster for volunteers. I also think perhaps for people who are keeping, say, a crop in a meadow, maybe you need to do it more often, and, you know, I think once a year is probably fine, but as I mentioned, we don't always have the volunteers to do it every year, and it has been at least a year and a half, but I think it's been two years since we've done it, and I, yeah, because it wouldn't have been the spring. And I would like to do this, because, you know, last time I went through the bittersweet, all the vines are really very high already, and it takes several years, I don't know how many, to try to get rid of bittersweet. Even doing the meadow, there are still vines that grow up the edges of the meadow, and those continue to drop berries and grow the invasive vines and things. So, it's an attempt to keep a multi-habitat. If we, you know, if we don't mow the meadow, it would become a forest again, that part, and it would be less rich of, fewer habitats in that 240 acres that we have there.
Gotcha, okay, that's my next question. Anybody else? Mike?
I'm gonna go back, hold a few years, I remember Selectma Petuta at the time, she had some of the same concern that Joe's raising tonight, the timing of the, however, if it's been a couple of years, I've got invasive, bittersweet vine and things like that, if they're not taken care of on a regular basis, they're uncontrollable. So, I would, given, given the fact that we're behind schedule, I would be okay with, and seeing as though you have the equipment and the volunteers ready to go next week, I would go ahead and vote in favor of doing that, however, keeping in mind that perhaps spring in the future would be a better, better alternative. But for now, yes, next week is okay with me.
Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Mike on the idea of playing catch-up, but could we find out definitively, find out what Ms. Moretti said, can we find out, is it gonna be, is it better if we do it in the spring versus the fall? I mean, going forward.
Can you ever find out? Sure.
Yes.
I mean, it's better for different species at different times a year, like, I mean, for birds, bird migration's sort of coming to an end, but there's certainly mammals, besides deer, that, you know, will benefit from that habitat, deer, I mean, rabbits, you know, like thickets and brush to hide in, so, I mean, it depends, it's not a, it's not an either-or, I mean, they're both viable solutions, there are times a year to do it, so.
So, if it's the board's...
If the board's preference to do it in the spring, you know, Mike's idea is going forward, you know?
A follow-up?
Yeah.
When you cut this down, this stuff down, where do you put it? In other words, my point being, could it be left in a place where the animals could get to it, but still not growing?
We, when we rake it, we drag it into the edge of the forest, so there, it creates thickets for the small mammals.
So, it doesn't leave the landlocked forest, everything remains there, and they'll have access to it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mike, anything?
I'm a little confused, I'd just like to know definitively what's better for the animals, if it's spring or fall, just because we do so much with building and everything, that the least impact we can have on animals is what I'd wanna do, so that's what I'd wanna know.
All right, so let's do this, we can, we can take a vote on this tonight, knowing that we're playing catch-up on this, but maybe, you know, at some point between now and the spring, John, you can come back and just give us a quick report as to what makes the most sense.
Okay.
I mean, I even been down for like alternatives, like, is it better to take a scythe? And, you know, like, from an ecological standpoint, keeps, you know, everything at a certain height, that way, you know, animals can still use the meadow as brush cover, and I don't know, I'm just, from an ecological standpoint, I agree, we should be doing our best to preserve it, but I also know that, like, having a diverse, diversity of habitats is also very healthy. So, okay, we'll plan for that. If there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to allow for the mowing of the meadow to take place on Sunday, November 20th.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye. Aye.
Abstain. 3-2 in favor to do the fall mowing.
Okay, thank you very much. I would like to ask people to think about, as we go forward, thinking about this, because it is my understanding that it's, there isn't a definitive answer, which I keep hearing from John, that it could be done in the fall, can be done in the spring, there are different species that are impacted. I know for the species of volunteers that it's much harder to do it in the spring, but if it was decided that in the future we should do it in the spring, we would maybe be able to try, otherwise, we may lose the meadow, because if we can't get the mower in on the wetland, on the wet areas, then we can't, or if it snows the weekend we scheduled, we may not be able to. I would like you to consider if we could come to an agreement on what's acceptable, that perhaps there could be a broad approval by the select board to allow us to mow the meadow once a year with John Keely's supervision and approval of, after we've decided if it's gonna be that you're only gonna approve it if it's in the fall, or you're only approving it if it's in the spring, or it's up to John, depending on the year, or whatever's going on. So, I would like to consider that sometime in the future, after we get more information to people, because I, you know, it is something that, the reason we all are a little vague about is because it's been so long, because it's hard to get the volunteers to do this. So, I'd like people to consider that.
Yeah, let's get some clarification on it, and, you know, John, I would even, you know, go so far as to say, if you feel as though there's enough meadow in the vicinity of the landlocked forest, meaning, you know, Mary Cummings Park or other than that, that it just makes more sense to let this, this small meadow become forest again, you know, like, let's just keep it open for discussion. At the end of the day, as a species, I don't think we know what the right answer is, so we're, you know, playing maker with, you know, this certain lot of land, but let's see if we can't make a... But let's see if we can't make a smart choice about it. All right.
Thank you very much. And if you want to come out on Sunday, the brush mower should be arriving at around 9:30. And you can get the map on, the new maps are not available, but the old map is on the website at landlockedforest.com. And anybody who's listening is welcome to come on Sunday. Bring work gloves. If you have an extra tarp or rake, that could be helpful. And we'll be providing pizza lunch and hope to be wrapped up by one or two. So I hope you can join us. Thank you.
All right, 676, we've got the sidewalk program. Paul's issue? I see Tom online.
We have Tom Hayes online as well.
Yeah. Go on right to Tom.
Hang on, Tom, we'll get you off mute. Good evening. So here I am back again. We have revised sidewalk priority map. Select Board had a few comments which we incorporated into the map. I'm not sure, did you get, folks get a copy in your packet?
Yes, yes.
All right. So I think the only changes really that we made was we incorporated the neighborhood, Donald, Vincent, and Hart into the program, prioritized it, made it like the third and the fourth priorities. And then we added estimated completion dates for both the sidewalk program, the capital plan, which is funded through appropriation from town meeting, and then the highway, DPW Highway Division has its own priority plan, which is based on their funding, you know, their operational funding, manpower, and the time they have to do those additional sidewalks. So with that, I was hoping the board would vote this, and this would set the plan in motion, and we would just pick away at these sidewalks as funding is available.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. John, questions? Jim?
Just a comment. Tom, I appreciate you taking our input to this, and I think this makes a lot of sense, and I'm very in favor of this.
Mike, anything?
No.
Joe?
No.
Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, no issue with the moving around of the priority. I'm just wondering, why aren't we going for more grant money that could help us kind of move along the process faster? What seems to be the issue with that?
I'll answer that, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. We had received notification of Safe Roots to School federal grant money. We did convene as a group with Tom, Rachel, Bob Cooner, and myself. It was a pretty quick turnaround time on the deadline for this year. But I think what caused us to regroup for next year the most was, it's not a program for just building sidewalks or rehabbing sidewalks. It's multimodal transportation. I think they're looking for bike paths in conjunction with that. But also bike paths that tie into a network, in a sidewalk network. And we think that we could access the program funding moving forward. But we think that we're going to have to be really creative to put together a program that would meet the program guidelines. So we are cognizant of it. We thank all the residents for forwarding along the tip about the Safe Roots to School money, but we did sit down and discuss that. And Tom, do you have anything to add in terms of what I just mentioned to the board
Yes, we apply for whatever grants are available. Number one priority is Blanchard Road, and that's been in the Complete Streets program for a while. Got some good feedback on that one, since it does, we have incorporated bike accommodations with linking the Oracle Bike Path into the Seven Springs Bike Path, as well as providing bike racks at Mary Cummings Park. And also, South Bedford Street will be incorporated into the tip. There's a tip project that, moving forward slowly, at the intersection of Cambridge and South Bedford. So we do, we try to prioritize those sidewalks to dovetail them into these different grant
That's your question, Mike?
Well said, Mr. Chairman.
Just to add to that, you know, I consider, Paul, perhaps, we, I know how busy staff can get, right? Things get crazy around here. And Eileen made a comment earlier about, you know, being busy not really being an excuse, which I have my own opinions about. But the consideration of, you know, us finding like a contract grant writer that we could kind of yank in, kind of like we do with the press release guy, you know, for times when we are like flat out, but we still want to get a grant thrown together. This is something to put in a bug in your ear. But, Tom, thank you for putting this together, and thank you for everything you do always. John, any further questions on this? All right.
Jim, I'll make a motion that we approve the list that's presented tonight, the sidewalk program.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Five, zero, zero. Tom, you're good to go.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Good night.
Thanks, Tom.
All right, next up, 677, Transportation Committee file report. Rick, Marge, Jeremy, it's good to see you all.
Nice seeing you too. Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, I'm Rick Parker, Chair of the Transportation Committee. And I just want to note the other members that were part of the committee. We had Ernie Covino, Vice Chair from Planning Board. We had Melissa Interes, the Recording Secretary. Marge, on behalf of the Council on Aging. Catherine Bond from the School Committee. Melissa Masardo was initially just an at-large, but she got elected to the School Committee. So we had some great people there. And Jeremy Harrington, and since been put on Zoning Board of Appeals. So it was a good group of very engaged members. I don't know if you've seen the presentation. It's more of just an encapsulation of what was done during the period. And we went 14 months. We initially started, the committee was formed in August of 2021. We met in September and finished just this last month. So what we did is we took the findings from the Town Meetings Transportation Committee, which was very in-depth, and we picked it up from there and looked at what their recommendations were. So we started by breaking down the population. We looked at young people, students and their parents. We looked at seniors, and then we looked at the daytime population, including the business community and residents that needed to get around. Some of the key driving factors from the previous committee were that 45% of high school students that took a survey so that they would be more engaged or take on a club or an after-school activity, and they currently could not do so based on not having transportation to get home. That was a real eye-opener for us. We also looked at the shifting economy here. We saw it was, it's moved away from some of the office buildings that we were reliant upon for some of the commercial tenants, but also moving away from technology and traditional consumer retail patterns. The older adults in the community currently served by the Go-Go Grandparent program is a very difficult community to come up with a one-size-fits-all solution. There are people going from different locations to different places at different times. So one of the first things we did was, we did an inventory of what we have in town for LRTA and MBTA, public transportation coming in, Lexpress. And then we looked at where our population centers were, the multifamily units, and then we looked at the parks. And kudos to Jangelina's of the Planning Department, putting this all up on the town's website so people know what's available. And then we start moving forward. So we looked at what was out there as far as on-demand services. We looked at what was out there as far as school, after-school programs, started looking at individual programs that could possibly help kids and parents get their kids to and from school, I mean, after school. And then we looked at grant availabilities. We studied what other communities were doing. There are some that are on pace with Burlington, in the early stages of transportation solutions. But there are other communities, you know, in neighboring communities that are much further ahead of us. So I know that the previous discussion on sidewalks, we did take some of that into consideration. And Jeremy, if you'd like to just talk a little bit about what we did on Safe Roots to School and where we're going?
Yes, thank you. And thank you for having us here tonight. So, so far, we've begun to engage Safe Roots to School. They've helped us perform some studies at Memorial, Fox Hill, and Marshall Simon Schools in town. And we've been able to action a few things at Fox Hill, actually, through some of these engagements. And as we've seen, we've done a walk, bike, and roll the school event. We've had hundreds of kids participating. It's been great engagement. But it's also opened our eyes to a lot of needs in the town around transportation to school. And really, we have the district partner with Safe Roads to School. As I said, they went through those transportation studies. And what we found is that, you know, we need to get more schools involved in this. We want to get Francis Wyman in. We want to get a bigger picture. We need to get the PTO involved. We have been able to get some small grants to get some things done. We've actually been able to get Burlington to become a bronze member, which is the second level. And the problem is from here to land some of the bigger grants, the more complex grants that could really open up transportation into the schools, make it safer, make it more fluid, it's a much larger bite than this committee could handle or than somebody could handle without the expertise and knowledge of how to navigate. Going back to the grant programs that were mentioned for sidewalks, it becomes very similar. And so in that respect, we feel that, you know, having expertise, a subject matter expert who could help drive that and coordinate it across other aspects would be very useful. And that's some of the information we've gotten from Safe Roads to School.
Okay, so Jeremy touched upon, you know, one of our, well, our major recommendation to this board is going to be the creation of a transportation and mobility coordinator position. Having served on Town Meeting myself for many years, anytime we saw a new position come in, you know, you first start looking at what does that position cost, what are the benefits? This is one of those positions that, similar to the economic development position. If we get the right person in, this position should more than pay for itself. There's a lot of money coming online with the state and federal and also private sectors. And I just heard the discussion previous about hiring potentially a consultant to chase these grants. When it comes to transportation, you need a subject matter expert. You need an experienced subject matter expert that knows how to go after these grants. We're in competition with other communities that have these people on board. So I think it's critical that we get that. I mean, we saw through a year of many meetings outside of the Transportation Committee meetings. This is a very complex situation and challenge for transportation. I know that Burlington has gone many years, you know, we had the B-line and some successes there, but it really takes an expert. And so our recommendation is going to be the creation of a transportation and mobility coordinator that can pursue federal, state, local, and private grant opportunities and make the connections across all departments of the town. You know, with the schools, they'll champion the Safe Roots to School program. There'll be the central point and the contact for all departments to be able to leverage their transportation needs and expertise and knowledge with this position. Right now, as we looked at the challenges of seniors, and again, we said they're coming from different places, going to different places at different times. I think the current situation, the current solution that Marge has going is probably the best solution right now. But those are evolving and changing on a regular basis. So Transportation Mobility Coordinator could take a look at that. I want to talk a little bit about the commuters and daytime population. And in the presentation, you'll see that there is a great slide that Jeremy created with the transportation and mobility coordinator being the central point of contact with Veterans Services, the Economic Development Office, Department of Public Works, Park and Recreation, public transportation, the MBTA and the LRTA, Planning Board, School District, and the Council on Aging. They all have transportation needs, expertise, and knowledge. So for the business community and representing the business community on this committee, we have some serious changes going on in the life science industry and those daytime employers that really drive our economy here. The daytime population is a big part of what spends their money. That corporate card really drives the amenities that have been here to attract other companies. With the addition of life science companies, we need the ability to get employees here. And the good part of it is the future workforce, those coming out of school right now, many of them not only don't have cars, they don't have licenses. They rely on public transportation. We're competing with Cambridge. We're competing with those that are right on the T. So being able to have the MBTA, now their bus network redesigned. We did advocate for the continuation of 354. We were successful with that. So that's not going to be discontinued. And I'm sure you heard from residents on that, those that were going straight into Boston. That's really not where we're focused as a business community. We're looking at the ones coming in, that are coming here to be the future employees of these businesses. So the Route 80 is the one that we're really advocating for. It is going to be coming from Davis to Burlington and run through Burlington to Third Ave. It's going to give us access to the employees in that Medford-Somerville area, also as a stop at Tufts. We're not talking about just, you know, hospitality and retail and restaurants. We're talking about medical staff. And Leahy is among one of those that really has a need for additional staff. But the life science companies, there's a pool of labor there that we want to be able to tap into. So we will continue to advocate for Route 80, but we really need a champion or a transportation and mobility coordinator to continue doing that. What that's going to do is, it's going to reduce, you know, peak hour congestion in town if we have people coming in without cars. But then we need a means to move them around. We also recommend that the Transportation Mobility Coordinator looks at a public-private partnership for circulation during the day. And while we don't have the ability to put a map up to show you, those who are in this room certainly know the corridor that the Economic Development Office is working on Blanchard Road to South Bedford Street to Mall Road to Middlesex Turnpike, basically a big square that goes around the mall in Leahy. That's really where the core of people need to move around. And we have those that are coming in, especially in the life science industry, along Blanchard Road, along South Bedford Street, and into Burlington Woods, that don't have the access to the amenities that we have here in Burlington. Now, that is a little bit of a discourage some of the employers, saying, hey, we can't get to those. But it also is not giving us full capacity for the amenities that we have here. It's a chicken and egg thing. We've got the amenities here. We need to make sure we continue to get the employees there. On your presentation that we handed, and you'll see the key sources that we looked at, there was a lot of work done by this committee. And I know, Nick, you were involved in overseeing it and keeping us, you know, going to bed sometimes before midnight. I want to thank those members of the committee that hung on there on those late nights. And certainly, we're open for questions. But the main recommendation is the creation of a transportation and mobility coordinator to be able to chase these grants and keep us competitive.
Thank you. John, questions, comments? Mr. Spail, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for all the work that you men and women have done for the Transportation Committee. Excellent stuff. Is the Transportation Mobility Coordinator something we see in other municipalities? Is this like a common thing that other towns have that we are lacking? Or?
Yes, it's, normally, when people get into transportation in a town, it starts with the seniors. They're the ones with the biggest need. It starts off, and so it falls on the COA. Or we've seen it here where it went from, you know, COA and DPW. The transportation coordinator has the knowledge. This is a very complex challenge. Yes, there are other communities that have them. And I think it's key right now that we have one to be able to chase those grants. Again, I'm very, I'll say stingy with the town's money. This is one of those ones, like the Economic Development Office, that should more than pay for itself. But we need an expert.
And I'd like to chime in that we have seen other towns creating this position and having it, and really using it to build kind of a unified vision for their towns and attract the same businesses we're going after. Where we currently have an advantage is we have the retail and we have the restaurants that these people... that these people will access during the day, and I think that's the key, that they could access. We need to make sure that they can access. And it's complex enough and cuts across enough different municipal functions that bringing in a Transportation and Mobility Coordinator can bring you that unified approach. And that's exactly what other towns are doing that are competing against us for this business, to be honest.
Yeah, it sounds like a great idea, and as long as this person can help us getting more grants, I think we need help in that area, apparently, so I'd be all for that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Joe.
Thank you. That was a lot of information.
It's been a long 14 months.
A lot of information for a group of people to put together. So, number one, I want to say thank you for that. I think that, I don't know if I can make a decision on this in the next week or so, or whatever, but there's a lot to discuss and a lot to decide whether or not we want to spend the kind of money we spend for someone in that line of fields we're looking for. I was about to talk to Mr. Vinesio about the budget, how it works, how it all goes about. I'm trying to figure the downside of it, because I could be Debbie Downer in two seconds and figure out this is the downside, this is the plus side. You have to look at both of them. So this is, you know, something that I need to look at, but jeez, what a lot of work you guys did. So, thank you for that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Transportation. Every time Mike Caneely comes out here, every time before him Jay Asher's out here, they could be here for MWRA issues. Two things that are consistent. They say Massachusetts desperately needs to get their arms around his workforce housing and transportation. I hear it constantly, even if they're here for something totally unrelated. They, you know, we've been to enough of those events recently, the one at Northeastern just the other day, talking about biotech and biomed and all those interesting things, but every single speaker talked about transportation and workforce housing. So, certainly an important subject, not just here in Burlington, but for the entire state. As far as, I'm wondering if a regional approach to this might be something that we explore in terms of budgeting, you know, at least as a first step. Maybe, you know, talk with the Bedfids and Lexington's and others, communities who actually rely on our amenities here in Burlington to attract businesses to their communities. So, I think that's just throwing it out there for something to think about.
Mr. Chairman, if I may? We do, we have had conversations with Lexington, and we looked at the regional study. Just know that while we partner with other communities, we're competing with them as well. And one of the things that it's interesting about Burlington, we end up, we're on the border of, we're at the end of the line for the MBTA, we're at the end of the line for the LRTA, we're at the end of the line for MAPC and NEMCOG. The end of the line has to really work hard for itself. You know, if you're right in the core, people who advocate around you, you'll get the benefit from it. We're at the end, and we need to be able to react and make sure that we can get that daytime population back. I saw the tax rates came out today. There's a lot of office space here right now, and if we can't get the employees here and convince those companies that they're going to be able to move around to the amenities, it's the employees that'll make the decision whether they come here or not. So, we've got a lot of good things happening here. We want to make sure that we can continue to do that.
Mr. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Jim. I've got a couple of questions and thoughts. First, great presentation, a lot of stuff. Question on the Route 80, direct route to Davis Square. Would that mean there's a bus stop going from Burlington directly to Davis?
Yes. What they're doing is they're discontinuing the 350. It'll run the same way the 350 does, but when it gets to Arlington, instead of running to Alewife, it'll now run to Davis. So, it's, it gives us an opportunity to get to people on the red line and the green line and really to tap into that, those young people that are graduating from school that are being attracted to many other places in the country. I mean, this is, you know, our education system here in the greater Boston area, it's national now, and we can't compete with Florida's weather or the Research Triangle in North Carolina, but if we can keep them here, if they grew up here, chances are they might want to stay here, but if you can't get them here by public transportation, that's really what we need. We need people coming in on public transportation that don't have one car, one parking spot per employee to look at the future. You know, there's a lot of money being spent right now on climate change, and, you know, we've got to get that one car, one person out of the equation. Burlington's been very dependent on that, as residents, we all know, and that's one of the things we saw. In Burlington, you're stranded if you don't have a car. This is one of those keys to moving it forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely.
Have you thought about where this position would fall under in regards to town government? Would it fall under Economic Development, I mean, it could fall, basically, fall under almost any department on that diagram?
Mr. Chairman? I believe that it should be in a partnership with Economic Development. Certainly, that's up to Paul and the town where it gets placed. But right now, you know, Melissa and her staff are spread pretty thin. We have a seat on the MPO. We're very active in MAPC, but we need to show up for these meetings. When you see projects that come up on the tip, you need to have a person in that room that's representing it. It's easy to pass over those that didn't show up for the meetings. I think the Transportation and Mobility Coordinator would be the one to take over that and work hand in hand with Melissa chasing some additional grants.
One more, just one more.
Yes.
I know we was talking a couple of years ago, and I think it's a great idea of some sort of shuttle in town so people don't have to drive to lunch. They can just take the shuttle in and take the shuttle back. Is, I didn't really see that in here, but is that something that was thought about?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. On page nine, we talk about building that hub. So let's talk about Mary Cummings Park, which is a great amenity that we have, but there's very few people that even know it's here from the daytime population. So being able to connect Blanchard Road to South Bedford Street and then cut into Burlington Woods to the Marriott, because a lot of people come in, they wouldn't require a car if they had this transportation, then down the Mall Road, over to Third Ave, down Middlesex Turnpike, and then back to Blanchard. It's the corridor that Melissa is working on right now. I think she calls it the Mall Medical Corridor, but it's that corridor. We need to get some shuttle running that on a regular basis, especially during the day when employees that are here without cars don't have access to the amenities.
It's just hard for us to see that on here, because every time you turn it, it turns, goes sideways. So we can't, we're leading it sideways, so. All right, thank you, Mo.
It's good to stretch the neck muscles. First off, just a huge thank you to the three of you, to the entire Transportation Committee. I know that, you know, 14 months ago, about we chose to form this committee on the heels of Town Meetings Transportation Committee and their findings. I appreciate the work of this committee. It would have been very easy for you to say, they said that, that sounds about right. We'll see you in 12 months. And you didn't. You dug in and really tried to crack a nut that is very, very hard to crack. It's hard to crack because it's a chicken and egg problem. Coupled with the fact that suburbia wasn't designed for public transportation, it was designed for cars. We operate off of the highway. We don't have a train, we don't have a bus station. And so Burlington functions in that way. But when you look at it from the perspective of seniors' schools and our daytime population, you begin to see opportunity. You know, whatever we do has to be built upon the notion that we are trying to tackle multiple problems with one solution, right? Not to say that, you know, because we have a hammer, everything's a nail, you know, but to really try and develop a multimodal solution to what is a massive undertaking, right? This is an infrastructure problem, and we're not going to just redo the roads, and we're not just going to, you know, it's not going to happen. And we also bear in mind things like density, right? We don't want to be on top of ourselves for the sake of making everything walkable, right? So it's a very, it's a very large thing to get your hands around, and I think this committee did a fantastic job. I think something from my perspective that this committee helped unearth was, you know, what I keep talking about is, you know, conducting an organizational assessment, right? How do we find a place for roles like this, right? Roles that the last 30, 40 years, we haven't necessarily needed because the economy has worked in our favor. And now that other communities, now that that metropolitan ripple effect is starting to push up into Bedford, Lexington, Woburn, and we're beginning to see the cities and towns around us grow, they're doing it by today's standards. They're hiring Economic Development Directors and, you know, Transportation Mobility Coordinators and all these, we'll say, new roles that we never needed necessarily because we were doing just a fine job on our own. So now it's time to take a step back, I think, and really, you know, decide how we want, you know, that structure to look like. Because I do think that these roles are important, but I don't just want to fill them because it's like, oh, we see a problem, quick, fill it, right? Like, let's be smart about how we decide to, for lack of a better term, grow the organization. This is, I mean, this report is fantastic. I love how it's broken down. I appreciate how well it's connected to the facets that we are currently engaging in. You know, and whatever the answer is, I don't have it right now. I think that we can agree on that. But, you know, I think that as a board, you know, we should keep this conversation alive, digest the report individually, circle back on the conversation, maybe in the new year, January 23, and decide how we can begin to pluck away at what is otherwise a massive chicken. Yeah, I know. I figured I could get the chicken and egg metaphor going. In any case, Joe, anything further?
Yep.
All right, well then, on behalf of the entire board, thank you all very much.
Chairman, do we have to approve this?
I don't think we have to approve the report, do we?
Or to accept it, maybe?
Accept the report?
Yeah, sure.
All right, then I'll add just a motion to accept the report as presented.
Still moved.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. 5-0-0. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Mr. Achilles, have we been keeping you waiting this whole time? Come on down. 678 Drake Road Parcel. What do you got for us?
So I believe you have a copy of a deed for your signatures. Mr. Gary Litchfield has donated a parcel of land. It was a negotiation with the Conservation Commission. He bought land at the end of Drake Road and is building a house, a single-family house there. And the total parcel was like three or four acres, and he's agreed to donate about one and a half acres to the town for conservation purposes. This land directly abuts the Mill Pond Conservation Area. So in addition to a donation that we got last year of about an acre on Chandler Road, we've picked up like about two and a half acres in the last year or so to add to our largest conservation area.
All right, Joe, any questions? Michael, start with you.
No questions.
Okay, Jim?
No questions.
Joe?
No questions.
Mike?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. This is to accept that land, Paul?
There's a motion in the packet, Mr. Chairman. You just need to insert the date.
I'll read past that.
I got it.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. I moved that the Conservation Commission pursuant to General Law's Chapter 40, subsection 8(c) and the vote of the Select Board authorizing same and dated November, today?
14.
14, thank you, 2022. Accept the two parcels located off Drake Road in Burlington, Middlesex County, Massachusetts, including parcel A containing approximately 19,423 square feet, and parcel B containing approximately 1.153 acres as depicted on a plan entitled Subdivision Plan of Land Located in Burlington, Massachusetts. Said plan having been endorsed by the Burlington Planning Board on September 15, 2022 as an approved under the subdivision control law not required and subsequently recorded at the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds as Plan Number 663 of 2022 and owned by C.N.L. Homes LLC for conservation purposes and further that the Conservation Commission Chair shall be authorized to execute any documents required to effectuate said gift. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been read, made, and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. 0-0. Some new land for conservation.
Excellent, thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for second round.
All right, 679, we've got Eversource.
It's Emery Walsh, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Walsh, we'll get you off mute in a second. You may already be off mute. Good evening, it's good to see you.
She hasn't requested him, she's not.
Oh, no, you're still on mute, hang on. Does she have to do something?
She's beginning a request, an officer that...
Has the request come through on your end?
So, John, she has a lock next to hers. I don't know if that's, I don't know if everyone does, okay. Well, I sent it to her, so.
What, spinning? Go back and change it. I think she's off, isn't she?
Is that working now?
There we go, all right.
Hi, good evening. My name is Emery Walsh, and I'm the Eversource Community Relations Specialist who covers the town of Burlington. Tonight, I'm here to request permission to work beyond November 15 so we can complete a reliability project out at Middlesex Turnpike at Burlington Mall Road.
Okay. How much longer past the date do you need?
Weather permitting, we expect to have it completed by the end of November.
By November, okay. Paul, anything to add?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Engineering provided some conditions if the board were to approve this. The reliability project does sound pretty important, Emery. So I hate to do this to you, but I just want to remind the board that we do have the holiday season coming up. This is right on Middlesex Turnpike in front of the mall. I would strongly urge the board to shorten up the timeframe on this and let's try to get Eversource moved out of there, maybe by next Tuesday, all cleaned up. The Wednesday before Thanksgiving is typically a horrific travel day, and then we have Black Friday on the day following Thanksgiving, and we'll be right into the holiday season there. So, difficult situation to manage as it is without the, without folks doing work on the road.
Okay. Emery, any issue with these?
Well, I'll, I just am not sure if we'll be able to complete it by next Tuesday. By any chance, would we be allowed to work over the weekend? At this time, I don't know if we would even ask for that, but I figured I should ask while we're on this call. Would we be allowed to work Saturday or Sunday?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You could put that as part of your approval, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. How do we feel about weekend traffic?
I'm just thinking by next Tuesday, we're going to not want to have any disruptions in that area. We're going to work through this weekend. I don't see an issue with that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, let's take it to the board, Jim.
Mr. Sagrino, Tuesday or Wednesday? He pushed it.
Well, Wednesday's the travel day before Thanksgiving, so just my thought there. But can you clearly pick any date that works for the board?
What's the date for next Tuesday? The 20th?
The 2nd.
A second. Mike, Anna?
You know, is this in relation to the substation work that's going on on... You know, is this in relation to the substation work that's going on on further down Middlesex Turnpike? I mean, because it seems some urgency to get that additional reliable power to folks further down the line there. I mean, if that were the case, I'd like to keep going on it.
Ms. Walsh, go ahead.
I, I do not believe they're connected, but I didn't think to ask the engineer that question. I know we need to install additional conduits in the public way because we have to reroute some conduits, some conductor. I guess it's all about improving reliability in the area. And the addition, the new conduit will also provide room for additional growth or capacity in the area.
You know, no, you know, we didn't, I have a drawing. I don't know if this is on the, the edge of the road or in the middle of the road or you're, really don't know where the work's taking place other than in this area. I wish it was more specific. What about night work? Emery, any chance the work can be done at night, overnight hours?
I, I really don't know. I can, you know, check on that. I know we're just really eager to get it done. So are you saying that we could work days till next Tuesday and then we could work at, are we talking like 9:00 PM or are we talking 11:00 to 7:00? Or what would the hours overnight be?
My thought would be, would overnight construction projects are usually 11:00 to 7:00.
Okay. And so would that be after next Tuesday, the 22nd?
That would be done by the 22nd.
So you want us to like start working nights right now? And so that we have it completed by the 22nd?
Let's, all right, let's, everyone pause for a hot second. So let's, Emery, ideally you want to take it to the end of the month, yes?
Yes, that's what we would like to do.
If we, if we blacked you out from the 23rd to 27th, could the workers accomplish the work with the weekend and daylight hours?
Again, I don't know, but if this is what we're being allowed, we'll, we'll do our best to get it done. I can tell you that much, I would circle back with the manager on the job first thing in the morning and I would reach out to Lynn to provide her with an update.
Okay, Joe, question?
Quick question, what happens if it doesn't get done?
Are you asking me?
Yeah.
Okay, wasn't she?
I was hoping you might answer that.
Well, I guess if, unless we could, you know, continue after Thanksgiving week to wrap it up, you know, the first week in December, we just really get to complete this. So could we maybe work? So if we wrap up our work on Tuesday, the 22nd, and then if we don't have it completed, could we go back out? Looking at my calendar.
It just, it just seems to me that the more time we give you, the longer you gotta take.
No, well, what if, well, we want it until the end of the month.
You're saying what if all the time? And then you're saying, I can't answer that question because I don't have the authority to answer that question. So, and I'm not trying to be, you know, whatever in this room, but all the questions aren't getting answered because either you have to go back to the contractor or the contractor's not going to give you an answer and we don't have an answer. The problem is their tiredness doesn't become our emergency. That's what, that's the way I'm feeling right now. You know what I mean? You should have started this project three months ago and then you would have had plenty of time to do it. Now we're asking for more time, more time and the stipulations in here, only because we're supposed to get maybe a little dusting of snow this next week. All trenches must be backfilled, must be paved. Contractors responsibility for the trenches throughout the winter season. There's a lot in there, you know? My suggestion would be that if you start at work tomorrow and they work day and night, or whether it costs you the overtime at nighttime and get it done by Thanksgiving, which would be the 22nd.
And so we're...
I want to make sure that I get through the whole, the whole board in terms of questions or comments, but what I will say is that our next meeting is the 28th. So just, I mean, to the board, if we wanted to give her a timeline that gets us to that day and then have her come back with more concrete information where the project is at, like, we don't have to...
But no, we're just pushing it out even further.
Well, I would hope that it'd be, you know, dire, almost.
Hang on, you know, we're telling you that right now.
I would, I'd like to echo Tom's request. I'd strongly be against doing any work Thanksgiving, from the Wednesday Thanksgiving on through that weekend, because it's a very busy time for the mall. It's a critical time for our, our, you know, our retail establishments. I'd be strongly against that. Just anyway, get it done by 22nd, that would be ideal. But maybe I'd like your idea, Mr. Chairman, about a blackout from the 23rd to the 27th in hope that they get it done by 22nd and then maybe we could revisit it at our meeting on the 28th.
Mr. Jim?
Yes, Jim.
Yeah. Like, maybe it's a good suggestion, maybe it's not, but approved into extension until for daytime hours to include the weekends up to the 22nd. Any work after the 22nd has to take place after 10:00 PM at night and be off road by 7:00 AM till the end of November and then that's it.
So you're saying, given the opportunity from the 28th through the end of the month to nighttime work?
Nighttime work. So they can work up to the 22nd to include the weekend during the day, but after the 22nd, any work after the 22nd, because of the congestion, it's going to be done in that area during, during shopping season, any work after the 22nd has to be conducted between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM.
All right, let me counter with this suggestion. What if we gave them from now to the 22nd, any hours that they wanted to work out? So they want to bring in two crews and work daytime, nighttime? I don't give a hot damn. Right? Give them the weekend and see what they can get done. If the project's not done by then, then they gotta come back before it's the 28th.
Right.
But, but, but it would have put a hard stop on it now.
But then there's a, you've got a four, four-day period there between the 20th and the 28th that they could be doing work if we wanted to allow it to be gone at night or something.
Well, that's, that's Thanksgiving weekend, that's the weekend that we're trying to clear out.
But it'd be open.
I wouldn't do anything, I'd black those days out completely. That way we got the roads cleared for holiday travel and for, for Black Friday. I don't know if that's... Because I do, with Joe, I think, I, I think that, I mean, you know, you, this is nothing against Ms. Walsh, right?
No, 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 no.
But you, you give someone a leash, they're gonna take it. You know, like, if they're saying, look, they give you this amount of time.
No one has asked us for a permit to remain open 24 hours, any of our retail customers in town here. So as far as I know, no one's going to be open around the clock. The only one that's ever done that in the past is Coles anyway, and we haven't heard from them. I don't think they're gonna... It sounds like they're very important, they get this done. I'd like to try and accommodate them if we can and if it can be done at night, I'm not opposed to that. If it can't be done at night, then I'm in agreement with everybody that that's a very, very busy area during the daytime hours and any interruption in the traffic is going to cause a lot of congestion in other areas of the full turnpike.
Right.
Remind, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
So if we went from today's to 14th, so say tomorrow, the 15th, if Lincoln get it down to the contractors, from the 15th to the 22nd, they can work almost 24 hours a day, right? From the 23rd, they can only work nighttime. So that's what you said, right? Right? So the 23rd, 4th, 5th, 6th, 7th, and then we have our meeting on the 28th. They can work nighttime. That gives them, that gives them seven days to go 24 hours if they need to, to get it closed up because of winter storms and everything else. I'd be in favor of that in two seconds.
Okay, so we, so the, the recommendation, just so I'm clear, is that 15 to 22? Whatever you want to do. 23 to 27 nighttime only?
Yep. And that covers your Black Friday, that covers your travel time for, for residents, anybody going, that covers the mall during the day, right?
Yeah.
And Mike, I think Mike's probably the only one that would be open, is Coles. I think they haven't come before us. The only ones open 24 hours a day there, right? Paul, if I, if we put that into a motion, is that something acceptable?
Will you, will we shut them down on the 27th or do we go to the end?
Mr. Chairman, can you just address the 28th? We'll have a full day of potential work that day before we have our meeting. So if you're gonna take this route with the...
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So the 28th will be theoretically a not-work day unless you address it as part of the motion.
Okay, so 15 to 22, day and nighttime work available.
Yep.
23...
To the 28th.
28, well...
27.
23 to 27 nighttime only.
Yep.
And 28, they can do daytime work if they need to.
Yes.
And, and then if it's not done by that point, then we'll see you then. My only question to the board is that the 25th, Black Friday, do we want to stipulate that they're done at like 5:00 AM versus 7:00 AM? If we think like shopping crowds are going to be out, do we think that's going to be an issue?
I don't think it's an issue as much because everyone does everything online now.
That's true.
You know what I mean? I'll take the big online thing. We're trying to accommodate the residents and the stores and Lynn over here, that's what we're trying to come right now. And I think what we just came up with is a really good...
Compromise.
Compromise for everything.
If you want clarified, clarify the motion.
Yeah, so there's one of this, between John, Paul and Lynn, if there's any concerns that we want to raise now while we're all sitting here playing, you know, name that date.
But I think when you talk about the 15th to the 22nd, you just need to include the weekend because that's not typically, so just make sure you stipulate from the 15th to the 22nd, including the weekend.
Right.
And don't forget to include Tom's...
Right, including Tom's conditions, of course.
So I'll, I can pull it all together.
All right, so Jim, you got?
You got it?
Got it.
All right.
Jim, can we read the conditions off for Emery first before you get into your motion? Absolutely. So, Emery, the conditions are as follows. The trench must be backfilled daily, no traffic plates. Number two is all trenches must be paved with hot mixed asphalt daily. Number three, once snow falls, all work must cease for the season. Number four, the contractor will be responsible for the trench through the winter season. And number five, a permanent trench patch installed within one year per DPW requirements. Those are the five requirements of the DPW, the conditions. To summarize the hybrid motion, so to speak, the motion I'm gonna make is to approve 24-hour day work to include the weekends from November 15th through 22nd. And then any work from the 23rd to the 27th must be done between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM and to include day work on the 28th.
Okay, motion's been made.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
We, well, I vote, we need to put the weekends, I know you have the...
I did, I did.
Did you say weekend?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I didn't hear that. Okay. My bad. Okay, so motion's been made and seconded. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Five zero zero. Lynn, you have a question?
Are you requesting them come back if they're not done on the 28th?
Yes, so if the work is not done, then we'll see you back here on the 28th.
Just leave a placeholder.
But really, with the answers that we... Right, yes, with, with any further clarification as to how long it's gonna take and, you know, why isn't it get done and all that fun stuff, Ms. Walsh. I hope that, you know, given that, that time, we can, we can seal this up, but, you know, so hopefully we won't see you. Hopefully you'll have a, a great Thanksgiving and a great, a great holiday. Hopefully see you in '23, we won't even see you before the New Year.
Okay, well, thank you very much and I want to wish all of you a wonderful Thanksgiving too.
Happy Thanksgiving.
All righty, good night now.
Good night. All right, six eighty, Town Common Policy.
All right, we've been, we've been around this move around a couple times.
Cleaned up nicely, in my opinion.
Has, has cleaned up very nicely. Any questions, comments, concerns as we, we did clarify that the mass state law for dog leashes, that there really isn't one, it's, it's what we have.
Will you refer to your city or town?
Refer to your city or town. And we have the, as long as you're 12 years, age or older.
Would you know that?
Have control, I guess, is the...
The dog.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, gentlemen, anything else on this?
Well, the, the dog thing was the only...
Yeah, that was the only thing holding us up, right? Okay.
I make a motion we approve the town college, Town Common Policy as presented tonight.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Five zero zero. Bing bang boom. Congratulations, everybody. All right, we got six eight eighty-one, recognition ARFA accounting and budget. Who's taking this? Paul, John?
I'll start it off, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to thank and recognize town's finance departments for once again receiving a nationwide award for financial reporting. This is in relation to the town's audit report for the fiscal year end 2021. Basically, it's a nationwide award from the Government Finance Officers Agency, which basically shows that the town really takes an exceptional, does an exceptional job of being transparent and reporting our results to the public once the close of the fiscal year ends. I think this is the sixth, sixth year in a row that we've had this achievement and it really, there's a lot of extra work. If you just look at a typical community's audit report and then you compare it to the ARPA, ARFA report, which is a new terminology that the, the agency is using, I think you'll see the level of detail and information that's provided in that report is exceptional and it really is a lot of extra work that goes into it from our finance departments with John's leadership, the accounting department, treasury assessors, and also very importantly, a prominent role from the budget department, Whitney Haskell and her crew. So I just wanted to recognize everybody for this. It's a very good achievement. It's not that exciting and, you know, it's accounting, it's kind of boring stuff, but it really is, when you understand what the report means and additional effort goes into it, it's an exceptional achievement for our finance departments and we just wanted to recognize it at this meeting.
John, anything you want to add?
Just added, yeah, this is something we're very proud of and I'm glad to be the one that gets to come and get all the praise and have Whitney and do all the work, so. But if you haven't seen our annual comprehensive finance report Jim has as a member of the Audit Committee, it's 127 pages and it consists of three sections. One's the introductory section, which tells you a little bit about the town, the history, the makeup of the town. Then it includes your audited financial statements and then it has a statistical section in it, which is really the, the bulk of the work that the accounting department has to put together. So it is, it's not just a snapshot of town, it's a detailed comprehensive report that, if you haven't seen it, it's on the website. Take a peek when you have trouble seeing it sometimes.
Want me to read this, John?
Yes, so it would be great if we could just read in the press release.
The press release? Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, also known as GFOA, has awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to the town of Burlington for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2021. The report has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. So it's not like the Accounting Olympics, apparently.
Any, any comments on the board?
I'll give you, I'd just like to say, I remember, you know, again, accounting, yeah, it's not, not that exciting and you can tell by the number of people logging off when we started to talk about this, but I remember a few years ago, we had some, when we, we got one of, or maybe the first one we got, we had some good natured ribbing when Paul was in that office over there. But the truth of the matter is, it's, it's, it's a crucial function of town government and we do it well, we've done it well for a long time and I'm, you know, I'm proud to, that, proud that we are recognizing that fact. And I'm, you know, I'm proud to, that proud that we are recognizing that fact again tonight. So I'll leave it at that.
Anybody else?
Well, I'd just like to personally thank John for all the hard work he puts into this, managing that side of the room, especially from being over on here and having to go all the way down the other end of the hall. So, Johnny, thank you so much for everything you've done.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to thank John for telling Whitney to do all the hard work.
The level of humility humility in this room is just astonishing at the moment, so wow.
Sagrino set the bar high, and I watch them continue to work.
Oh, man. Well, I mean, I I know from the outside looking in, it can it can often seem like we're constantly, you know, offering self praise and accolades, but, you know, you don't get, you know, national or in this case, we could say international recognition for the work that you do and the fact that multiple departments consistently receive this kind of attention is a testament to the staff and everything that you guys do. So as much as we joke, thank you.
You're here, Joe, well done.
All right, six eighty-two, zoning bylaw for musical signs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just an update from the board. This is a project that we've been talking about for a while now to get an electronic sign cited to replace the banner signs at the corner of the common. We worked with town council to to put together a warrant article that we just began submitting to the various boards and committees. In addition to that, Nick and I had a meeting with members of ZBRC Sign Bylaw Committee. They also have a signed by law possibly projected to go to town meeting in January. And they brought up some good points during the meeting. And I think, you know, we're gonna try to work hard to melt, see if we can melt our warrant article into theirs by the time we get to town meeting, but for now, we'll keep it separate. I had forwarded to the board members individually some proposed backup for the for the zoning change. And if you could just provide me any feedback that you have on that, and we'll get that distributed to the other boards and committees that need to review it and move it forward. But tonight, I'm just looking for a vote to move forward, official vote. Been talking about this for a while now, so, you know, pre pandemic. And it's nice to actually finally at least bring it down to the end, see what happens, so.
Yeah, yeah, I had the opportunity to go to the signage subcommittee meeting on, what was it, last Wednesday? And not only talk about, you know, this, but see all of the work that they've been doing. And I gotta say, it's it's pretty incredible. They've they've taken that a very, very, you know, they've come a long way in terms of really trying to define what works for Burlington, which is a very difficult hat to put on, especially when it comes to signs. So, you know, kudos to them for all the work they've been doing. I think the biggest takeaway that I got from, you know, sitting and listening to that conversation is that whatever we do to the best of our ability, depending on how this jockey's out, you know, with with their article and, you know, timing, is to try and get this as close to their, you know, policy, you know? That way, you know, when everything does come to fruition, knock on wood, hopefully, you know, we're right in that ballpark, right? We haven't done anything out of whack. But based on everything that I was seeing, we're we're pretty dang close already to our initial discussions. Questions, comments? Anyone want to talk about it?
We've done enough.
We've done enough?
Done enough.
Talking about those dates really really sets us for a loop. All right. So with that, I'll I'll entertain a motion. If folks want to do that.
I'll make a motion we approve the zoning bylaw for municipal signs as presented.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Five zero zero to keep this moving. All right, six eighty-three, subcommittee reports. Jim, you want to go first?
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Chairman. With regards to the Sculpture Park, we had a Halloween event on October 29th. Very well attended, there's a couple hundred people there. Wegmans, again, our great corporate neighbor, donated apple cider. We had a professional painter there doing some pumpkin paintings. And we had at least 75 children paint their own pumpkin at that event. I want to, you know, just give kudos to Barbara LaRue and the rest of the Sculpture Park Committee for pulling this together. It was kind of a last minute thing, but it was very nice, very well attended, and just a a great event for the Sculpture Park. With regards to the fire department, next week Edgar McLean will be retiring after 34 plus years of service. Always involved with the unions. Edgar's a great guy and, you know, he'll finally be getting his turn to retire. And the fire chief, I'd like to remind people that with Thanksgiving coming up, if you plan on doing any deep frying of a turkey, make sure you do it outside, not on a wood pad deck. Don't put a frozen turkey into a deep oil fryer. It will cause a reaction. Make sure it's done outside on asphalt or concrete surface. And be very careful because those can be, those can hurt someone if it's done done properly.
Very good. Mike?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, a couple things quickly. You know, we're all out there, Veterans Day, so kudos to Chris Hanifin and Jennifer Goldsmith for the, if any, I can't give Mr. Hanifin credit for the weather, although some people do. I would like to, you know, the chief mentioned, the honor guards are there, they're always here, both police and fire, and they they doing outstanding job, they look great, they're they're it's a again, it's all these guys are there on their their own time. And I gotta say, I think it reflects well on both of those departments. Every time they they go out there, I think it's a great community resource tool that we have, and they do it for the, you know, the goodwill that it produces being out there. The other note, just a reminder to folks, DPW and the new trash regulations, these regulations in Commonwealth of Massachusetts are not from Burlington. Regarding textiles, mattresses, clothing, any of those things have to be packaged and delivered or picked up separately. We've got some programs out there regarding textiles. There's a company we can contact to come and pick them up if you can't get to one of those clothing sites. Please pay attention to those rules because they'll be looking in your toders, especially early on, as, you know, this thing's just being implemented. And if there's things like that in there, they're not gonna empty your your toder. So I'm talking curtains, towels, sheets, blankets, anything like that, any sort of a product like that. You have to, we have to make other other arrangements for disposal. And again, I encourage you to visit the DPW website for more specific rules and guidelines on that. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Joe?
Just something real quick. Today I had the pleasure of going to the Pine Glen School for a walkthrough, myself, Jimmy. Mike went with a couple other people that were there. Dr. Conti was there, we walked through the school, and what an amazing job they do up there for the small room that they have and the way they use closets for rooms and the way they manipulate kids around to do this, to do that, it was outstanding. So I just wanted to shout out to our school department for utilizing every inch of space that they could possibly muscle up in that building. Teachers were were excellent, walking in the classrooms and being invited right in with the kids going on. It was it was very, very well done, and I I really enjoyed it. So I hope that they make good of their promise and let us go through the couple more schools that we have in town. I enjoyed it very much. That's it.
Okay, Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yeah, quick like to echo Joe's comments about the visit to Pine Glen. It was really an eye opener, and I think it's something that we should be doing a lot more of just to see our wonderful educators and our our kids in action. It was a nice walkthrough, and thank you to Principal Lyons and Dr. Conti for showing us around. It was a a really great visit, and I took a lot away from it. We we, again, as I said earlier, we hear a lot of the bad things, we get a lot of the bad emails, but it was a really nice feeling in the school, the kids were excited to see us. It was such a great visit, and I'm looking forward to hopefully checking out the other schools as we ask Dr. Conti. I wanted to congratulate Detective Paul Callahan, who was recognized by our Department of Justice for an investigative achievement award. He was part of a federal task force investigating a doctor that was illegally prescribing more than 110,000 110,000 Adderall pills in exchange for cash payments. And Detective Callahan is a 19-year veteran on our police department, and he was one of 30 recipients recognized at the Mookley Federal Courthouse in Boston, October 26th. And again, just to echo what I said earlier, our police department continues to be a beacon of of excellence. And one of the the great things about being in Burlington, a great source of pride. So thank you to Detective Callahan and Chief Brown and everyone involved, it's just a a great thing. Wanted to also give a couple kudos, like Mike said, to the Veteran Services Department. Just they do a great job with the ceremony, was a great turnout by the town, is a great show of respect for our veterans. Thank you to Amy Warfield, who did another election of the town, our town clerk and the town clerk department, they did a great job. And just a reminder, Thursday night, we have 6:30, the MassDOT is running the informational meeting for anyone who's interested in the repaving, resurfacing of Cambridge Street. And lastly, the Treehouse grand opening is this Saturday from 1:00 to 5:00. So I'm excited to check that out, and it's gonna open up, and they're gonna have ceremonies and I think fireworks late at the end of the day. So a lot of stuff happening. Thank you.
Everyone loves fireworks. Nothing for me tonight, actually. I'm just gonna pass it right to Paul.
I just have a couple things that are already covered. I too would also like to commend the Veterans Department, Chris Hanifin and Jen Goldsmith for just an amazing ceremony, very touching. I'd also like to thank the Burlington High School Band, Boys and Girl Scouts, and again, many residents that show up for that event every year. It really is heartwarming to know how how the town feels about its veterans. Secondly, a couple weeks ago, the board determined our policy with respect to trash. Public Works is getting the numbers in. We hope to be back to you within within the next couple of meetings to talk about how we made out in our discussions on a new contract. So with that, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Is something else?
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Motion's made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Five zero zero. Good night, everybody.
Thanksgiving.